All who do cannot rock office. Mr. Strong?
Here.
Ms. Thor?
Here.
Mr. Baywood?
Present.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Bulger?
Present.
Ms. Lopin?
Present.
Ms. Watson?
Awesome.
But please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands the Constitution of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There is no public comment for tonight, so we will move to five.
And five point one is a presentation on a special occasion. Our Executive Director of Special Education, Dr. Hildreth, is here to present to the board this evening. So welcome back, Hildreth.
Thank you, Mr. D. Harris, evening. Um, I wanted to also acknowledge the Special Education Director Team that we have in our district, um, Tony Galan, who is the Director, um, Kara Chase, who is Assistant Director, and Dan Stockhouse, who is the Associate Director. Thought this might be a good opportunity for you to meet our district administrative team. So what I would like to do is provide an annual report. Um, I was here last year, um, in October, so this is an opportunity to review what we had accomplished this past year and also to provide information for you as to what we're hoping to continue to accomplish this year. So last year, when I presented to you, I provided a brief overview of our department, given that we had a number of new board members who had just been elected. This year, what I thought I would do is just give you a high-level overview of the number of students that we serve within special education, early childhood through transition. We have about fourteen percent of students with IEPs or individual education programs. This percent, in terms of our total student population, is comparable to what we had last year and continues to be less than the state percent overall. We have about six hundred and eighty students with five and four plans in early childhood through twelfth grade, and again, this is comparable to the number of students with five and four plans that we had last year. So in terms of the overall goals for 2026, um, what we really hope to achieve is to improve outcomes for students with disabilities across three primary areas, high-quality instruction, well-trained personnel for program implementation and oversight, and those just-right services and supports for all students. You have seen this table as part of In Vision 308, so what I'm going to do is review what we accomplished in 21, 22, and then I'll spend a bit of time providing a high-level overview of what we're hoping to accomplish in 22, 23. So our indicators for success, which I presented to you last year, that I was hoping to be able to share with you, addressed kind of three primary areas. Um, I had stated that what we would do is look at the implementation of the decision-making process in targeted programs, the initiation of a program REACH, which was designed for students with internalizing barriers, kind of anxiety, depression, school refusal, to learning and onboarding and training our local education agency, or LEA, representatives for specific IEP meetings. I want to highlight that these three areas do not represent the comprehensiveness of our programming in special education, nor all the areas for growth and development across special ed in 308, rather they're representative of the targeted areas that we identified and are aligned with In Vision 308. So for the first indicator of success, we address that through the application of the cross-categorical matrix, which looks at students' support across academic as well as social, emotional, behavioral areas to facilitate student decision-making at the elementary, which were the life skills program and the instructional skills programs, together with the entry and the exit criteria for Eastview Academy and/or REACH programs. We continue to use this matrix to support programming for students based upon students, as I had just mentioned, academic, behavioral, social-emotional learning needs that we've outlined in the matrix. So we successfully piloted the REACH program at the high school level, and we're currently fully implementing the program at the district administrative center this year. Uh, this is kind of a precursor to what I'm going to share with you in terms of what we're hoping to continue to accomplish throughout this year, but we're providing daily therapeutic support, together with this long classroom environment, in addressing the needs of students who've been recommended for the program. Last year, I had said that we were going to train all of our K through eight assistant principals and our K through twelve speech and language pathologists to serve as LEA representatives for targeted IEPs. Um, we were able to train all assistant principals, K through eight, and the speech-language therapists to serve as LEA representatives. We also attended assistant principal meetings throughout the year to provide ongoing training. We conducted check-in surveys three times last year to provide or obtain feedback regarding the training content and the process, and made adjustments accordingly. So as kind of a snapshot, as far as where we feel that we were able to move the needle, so to speak, we feel that we're well on our way to making progress towards the 2026 In Vision 308 goal. So what I'd like to do is just spend a minute or two highlighting some of what we are hoping to accomplish this year and to highlight those key indicators that we're going to share in October of 2023. So we're expanding the decision-making framework to the high school. As I shared last year, we've implemented the cross-categorical framework for early childhood, elementary, and junior high. This year, we'll focus on instructional programming at the high school level to ensure course courses and content are implemented that address students' needs. So an example of that is we're reviewing our life skills program classes to ensure that their standards align and they meet the Illinois State Board of Education graduation requirements. We're also implementing a process for IEP support to support social work services at the high school level. This last summer, a representative group of social workers completed curriculum work to identify research-based interventions for small-group social work support that is currently being implemented. We're continuing to identify materials and to train our certified staff in research-based curriculum selected to address students' academic and functional needs. These are both standards aligned and our replacement, um, or standards-based, and our replacement curriculum are standards aligned. So in the 22, 23, we had stated, initial In Vision 308, we had stated that we were going to continue to pilot the REACH program, but as I've shared with you, we're currently implementing it with our daily therapeutic supports. For Eastview Academy, during the spring of the last school year and over the summer months, teacher teams develop processes for positive behavioral supports as well as restorative practices. We're continuing to provide ongoing professional development in that area. In particular, we're looking at circles as a methodology to support positive peer interaction and classroom culture. So as already addressed within the presentation, the district's support team, in collaboration with the related services needs, as well as the program administrators, continue to develop and implement training to key stakeholder groups to ensure skill proficiency. As a component of the OESPA contract, the Special Education Department has collaboratively developed, with OEA staff input, trainings in de-escalation techniques and working with students in specific disability categories for our teaching assistants. We provided that training at the institute day, in which the teacher assistants were in attendance at the beginning of the school year, and as you know, we continue to onboard teaching assistants throughout the school year. And today, we can provide that training specifically within the school context, but we're also going to continue to provide, um, pre-recorded, uh, training sessions that teaching assistants can participate in as part of the ongoing process. And our training in co-teaching and support facilitation will be both part of it as well as implemented this year to continue to expand our service delivery model. So in addition to the LEA academy training that we conducted now in August for our new assistant principals and program administrators, and as you know, we've had a large number of new administrators join our team at SD 308, and also in September for our new speech and language pathologists, we meet regularly and weekly with our new administrators to provide ongoing topics specific to LEA support. Mentors have been identified and are assigned to mentees to support and coach as well, and new administrators are serving as the LEA's for meetings with mentor and director support. This year, the early childhood assistant principal is also participating in the LEA training and is receiving mentoring support. I want to highlight that the LEA responsibilities for speech and language pathologists are for those students who have speech and language services only. So the SLPs or speech and language pathologists are required to be in attendance at these meetings regardless. Serving as an LEA for these speech and language meetings only is much more efficient in terms of timeliness and preparation and implementation of our IEP meetings. So where do we want to meet in October 2023? So we're going to present three indicators of success. Based on the ongoing training and review of IEPs this year, teams are going to apply best practice principles when writing IEPs and conducting IEP meetings. All certified staff will be trained on research-based instructional strategies and will implement these programs with ongoing training and support through our district support team, and all levels will apply the cross-categorical matrix to support special education decision-making, regarding that best-fit allocation of support. Thank you. Questions?
You know, I just, I, I, I know you've got some. The matrix, cross-category matrix, just some, what are the categories?
So what we had done, and this feels like this is twenty years ago, but it was actually prior to, um, our lockdown in COVID. We had presented the, um, I presented the cross-categorical matrix to the Board of Education as well as to EPIC, our Exceptional Parents for Exceptional Children, um, group. Basically, it looks at a continuum of support across academics as well as behavior and social-emotional learning. So those students, for example, whose needs would be in that top left-hand quadrant would be those students that could be well-accommodated within that general education setting with kind of pull-up, push-in, and co-teaching support. Those students that would be kind of to the far upper quadrant to the right would be those students that require replacement curriculum and programming because of the intensity of their instructional needs. Those students on the bottom quarter of the quadrant, that would be kind of on the left-hand side, are students whose behavioral needs are such that they require more years of programming. This is where our public therapeutic program, Eastview Academy, uh, really comes into play in terms of the support that can be provided. And then for those students that are kind of in that bottom right-hand quadrant, those are students who have both behavioral challenges and needs as well as, um, intensive instructional needs. So when we're looking at our students as far as their, um, learning needs, kind of those educational needs, the adverse effects that their disability has on their, um, learning, we really looking, are looking to see where can we best address their needs within that kind of least restrictive environment.
No, I, I, no, that, that.
I think that's a follow-up to the quadrant. So like, what percentages are your students in, in these quadrants, like, of all of your specially needed students? Where's the low?
So the majority of our students would fall within that upper left-hand quadrant, who are being provided supports through, um, either push-in or pull-up services. Um, that would be the majority of the students. The, um, smallest percent of our students would be, those students would be that the broad and right-hand with intensive instructional and/or behavioral, and behavioral needs. Those students are the students that we most often find ourselves looking to alternative private placements that have the intensive therapeutic supports that we can't necessarily provide within the context of our general education buildings, nor through our public therapeutic program.
Uh, what is REACH?
So REACH is the program that we had piloted this last year that is specifically designed for high school students that were having difficulty, um, attending school through school refusal, refusal in part because of intensive depression, anxiety. We also looked at possibleizations as a indicator in terms of the need for that support. We've seen much more success with students in a smaller, more intensive therapeutic setting to really to be able to address their, um, kind of SEL needs, um, together with their academic needs. REACH is actually an acronym that we created as we were going through this process for resiliency, expression, awareness, connection, and hope.
Right, can we add that to the website somewhere?
Yep.
And then, so my other question always comes back to these early screenings, so I know we've talked about them before, but a lot of these early screenings can fix some of the things that the IEPs are necessary for in the 504s. So have we, to be honest, at all?
As we had talked about before, we're continuing the early services that we had done last year.
So?
We have not identified new students.
So are we still testing these students? Are we expanding it to special ed?
Yes, so what we had said that we would do is that we would follow those students that we had started with to see whether the, uh, data is looking at that and that, uh, to see whether they're making growth and then make a determination on expansion.
Right, but that was only like fourteen students.
What, what is this? What are we talking about?
So, early.
Exactly.
Let's just say.
Being a reading specialist, I'm curious.
I don't have any of that data in front of me, but I think it was more like, it was twenty-five students.
I think we tested twenty-five, but fifteen of them were.
It was, but we, we also, we set criteria, if I remember correctly, and it was, uh, students that are receiving reading interventions in the fifth grade, I believe, so all those, those students. Uh, received a screening last year, and those students that are using the colored overlays are continuing to use them, and we're, we're monitoring their progress over time, and we're doing the same with this year's current fifth-grade students. So it's, is, is, are there more kids? There are, because there's kids that are moving forward from this year, from last year, as well as any that were identified this year through, uh, through the similar of what we did last year.
What feedback have we gotten from the reading specialists?
Are you testing work? So the reading specialists were not excited about having to do it. I, as a general statement, they didn't want to do the whole testing, so they were going to do partial testing. It's where the kids have the colored overhead, and it helps you, some kids can track and focus, and it helps you just focus, I guess, or track. I, we'd have to, we'd have to have a tan prison scheme here to explain it, but, um, it's, it's just an alternative, out-of-the-box way that has been proven to help kids read that we started last year and we tested some kids who were in a reading program. And all I'm asking is, because unless I'm mistaken, you said you were following the kids they tested last year, but what I want to do is expand it to the special ed kids, because sometimes these kids end up with 504s, not IEPs, because they can't read what's on a paper. But if you get a little colored overhead between their eyes and that paper, it helps immensely, and I know this because my own kid has one. Which is true, I am so passionate about it, and truly irritated that we have not expanded it. Now, it doesn't cost anything. It's testing. It's testing kids who could use it.
Is, is, is there no cost? And, I mean, no.
It's time.
It's time, and it's, um, overly, it's, most of it is time.
Just, does time cost us money?
In the amount of interventions that people wouldn't be given during that, yes.
Okay. I, I have a bunch, but I didn't want to, I didn't want to take up people's time. If you, I've got a bunch, huh? Um, so, uh, I, I want to start off with one piece. I know you and I have talked about this quite regularly, um, as far as, um, I know this has come up, um, periodically with our, um, um, THH, um, um, community and, um, and, and how public schools are at a disadvantage, uh, who run these programs as far as funding is concerned, um, and how, um, there's, there's an advantage for private schools. Um, and, and I wonder if you could, because you're going to be able to articulate this far better than I can, but, um, I wonder if you could maybe go into a little bit about that piece, and I do have a follow-up for that, but, um, maybe help me out with, uh, because this came up in our conversation, of course, in our, in our meeting, and I know I'm going to kind of combine some of that piece, but, uh, some of the challenges we face, um, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's a community I value and have value ever since I've come on board, and, um, I'm not sure that, um, a lot of people are aware of, of this piece when it comes to the funding piece.
Sure, so our conversation was centered around the tuition, students that we have primarily in our Deaf and Hard Hearing Program, although we do have tuition students, um, who have attended in our Eastview Academy program and also in our STARS program modification. Um, in essence, um, the districts who send their students to our programs, um, and will use Deaf and Hard Hearing, because at one point, almost forty-four percent of our students in our Deaf and Hard Hearing program were from our surrounding districts and, um, who were paid tuition for the students to attend. What we found in terms of our trend data is that the students that are being requested to attend our program are students with multiple disabilities in addition to the, um, having Deaf and Hard Hearing, as in area of special education eligibility. So these students invariably, um, are, um, much higher cost as far as services and supports that are needed in order to educate them appropriately. Invariably, um, they're in self-contained classrooms where there's a smaller student-teacher ratio, oftentimes they want to have teaching assistants. They also have sign language interpreters, they have audiology support, they have, um, audiological equipment, uh, as well, either hearing aids or other some other kind of device, application device. Um, and so when districts send their students to our program, they, um, can apply for reimbursement. This is sort of a funding code cost excess cost that, um, given the cost to educate that student, they are eligible for reimbursement utilizing the formula that the Illinois State Board of Education uses. Unfortunately, the Illinois State Board of Education does not fund that fully, and depending on the distribution of funds for special education within the state, that actually can result in virtually no reimbursement at all. So for the past two years, for example, students that eat that excess cost threshold have not been funded at all by the State Board of Education, so that is a district cost. So those tuition costs are then obviously, um, charged back to the districts that send them. The alternative to being in a public program would be to send their students to a private placement, um, and in which Deaf and Hard Hearing services could also be provided together with whatever special education services and supports they would need above and beyond. Um, the state, um, reimburses, and again, a formula that they utilize, but it's about, on average, forty to fifty percent of what the district costs are that they incurred for the private placement. So students in our public therapy program, for example, are not eligible for that level of reimbursement, it's only private placement. So there really serves to disincentivize districts to send students to our district for participation in Deaf and Hard Hearing programming, for example, because if they were to send a student with more intensive needs to a private placement setting, they would be eligible for reimbursement, which they're not eligible for now based upon the way in which the, um, state is distributing the funds.
And I feel this is an opportunity for us to talk to our legislators, and I also feel like there's an opportunity, perhaps by the time we get to, I mean, we're going to miss out on this round, but perhaps by the time we get to the next round of, um, big forward for IASB, we know we have triple I coming up, there's definitely opportunities to, uh, discuss with legislators and also with, um, other boards as well, board members too, so, um, and I, I definitely, uh, reach out to the community to help us out. I mean, we have, how many, how many, how many representative state senators do we have to touch our district, for crying out loud, so? Um, and, and they don't know, like, and I'm not, I'm not yelling at them, like, they, they wouldn't know something like this, it would be incumbent on us to help with that education piece. Uh, I'll try and move through these real quick, but we had a lot of people which thank you to the community, applaud them. We had a lot of people show up for our committee meeting, so great, um, you know, we send that out there and then people show up, which I love. Um, and this one's not really a question, it's a concern about boundaries, if it happens again, making sure that we don't put sped last, that came up in our, in our meeting. Um, parents with a student with an IEP had concerns about students, uh, the parent themselves was concerned about disruption, uh, them, their own student disrupting other students. Um, I don't know if you want to talk about, uh, placement and how we address those issues, if we see issues like that happening, or?
Sure, um, so I believe that at the committee meeting, I had mentioned that, um, we have students entering into kindergarten first and second grade, many of whom have been home for a number of years. Our incoming kindergarteners haven't necessarily had the opportunity to participate in a pre-kindergarten program or even a daycare setting, so coming into a structured school setting can be particularly challenging. So what we have done is we have, um, uh, we have, um, behavior interventionists that we've assigned to work in specific schools, I, um, where, in which we find students are coming in without having those school-related behaviors taught and learned and acquired prior to school entry. Um, we have a number of students who don't have individual education plans, who are finding it very challenging to be in that structured school setting. So we've made an effort to provide those behavioral supports in those elementary, in particular, school buildings to help address that, but there is a due process that we also have to undertake in order to ensure that we're providing opportunities for those students to acquire those behaviors before we start to think about, is this a child-finding concern that might warrant a special education evaluation? So there's always a balance that we need to maintain. We have to have those structures and supports within our general education programming prior to looking at whether or not we need to pursue an evaluation of special education consideration. And I think, um, that has proven to be somewhat of a change for some of our school buildings, where their students in past years have come to school ready to learn. And so, um, this is certainly, um, an area of need that we recognize, we started to see that trend prior to COVID, we've certainly seen an increase in that, and we have tried to adjust accordingly to provide those behaviors for these buildings.
And it was brought up, training staff, you, you mentioned that, you talked about that, and kind of to go along with what Ally said about, uh, website, uh, I know it had brought, been brought up maybe to, um, to have the MTSS process, uh, listed on our website a little bit more visible, um, that was brought up. If you want to talk about that, feel free, um.
I'll just, uh, Teaching and Learning Board Advisor Committee, the whole topic was MTSS, or multi-tiered systems of support, uh, and a lot of the focus of In Vision 308 is improving tier one with the literacy framework, the math framework, and then much work on interventions this year, so yes, that will be added as we become more precise in our process.
Awesome, and, and last one, I'll combine these two, um, until 2026, concerns about supports for students in core electives and also, uh, addressing the effects of not having a bridge class, like pre-algebra was the example that was given that may have, uh, or may, may have on some of our students.
Sure, I believe that, uh, the question that was posed was why are we not co-teaching all of the subjects, that we're only choosing science, social studies, math, and English courses to co-teach? Uh, it is a, a decision that is somewhat budgetary, but also the supports that are needed to get through the core content areas are our priority. Uh, then you asked about, uh, pre-algebra, and some of the, taking a class as freshman year as pre-algebra does not count as being. And some of the, taking a class as freshman year is pre-algebra does not count as being freshmen on track and getting people to where they need to be to take algebra. So that is why some of the decrease in that, so that we can raise our proficiencies of freshmen on track.
I appreciate that. And again, I appreciate, I want to say, I appreciate for the community members who came out and spoke. Really appreciate that. And Dr. Hillbrand, I really appreciate you and your team. I can't say that enough also, so thank you. I know every time that we meet, discuss, I learn quite a bit. I appreciate that.
I just also wanted to mention that we prioritize those areas too, because those are the goal areas for E L A and math that are typically embedded within students' individualized education programs. And so that gives us an opportunity to address those skill deficits and remediate those deficiencies too. So thank you for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Six point one, board member comments. Anyone having more than their comments?
Sure.
Can I go?
Very good.
All right, I'm going to lay this down for you. We have staff that's early trained at Boulder Hill, Old Post, Churchill, Prairie Point, Hunt Club, Southbury, and Long Beach. In case anyone finds some time to ask if they can get their kid screened. It's well worth it.
Well, I didn't have anything prepared, but I'm to an event today for the cross-country over here at Oswego East. My daughter participated in the rain and I just wanted to congratulate all those students for sticking it out and getting through all that rain and cold and wind. Forced me to come here also, but it was, I'm imagining character building. And it'll be, it'll be a memory, to say the least. And it was great.
Thank you.
I, you know, I'll just say something real quick. I've had quite a few conversations with quite a few community members. And I know that a lot of times, a lot of what I say is pretty vague. And I apologize sometimes that even frustrates me, but I'll try and explain this and it's probably going to be vague and I apologize in advance. But you know, sometimes I'm kind of forced to do that. And I did have a conversation with a community member over the weekend. I think they, they understood and got that. And again, this is going to be vague, but I like to at least respond to them publicly and say, I hear you and I see you. And hopefully you, you know that you're heard. And I appreciate that you're, you're watching these things. And as, as I, as I've said many times, sometimes it is absolutely about what you hear, but a lot of times it's about what you do not hear out there as well. And so pay close attention to that also. And so thank you to those who are staying engaged. You are greatly appreciated.
Six point two, board member, board committee reports. Start with the equity report.
Sure, but you pretty much saw it. The only thing I'll add, I mean, you saw a lot of it. One thing I'll add, I know we kind of skipped over the, the amount of students, but you know, if you take the amount of students who have I E Ps and five oh fours, you're talking about three thousand students, right? I mean, think about that for a second. That's, that's, that's a large amount of students. And so, you know, one thing that came up was talking about how, and those students are all over our district, right? In every, every single school that we, we have. I believe, I believe I can say that. Can I say that? I can say that, yes, I can say that, okay, thank you. And making sure that we have that community connected was something that we discussed in our meeting. And I'm happy to hear that we have principals who are sending out epic flyers and trying to make sure that we're, we're being more inclusive and so forth. So that was something that came up. And also talking about the fact that our needs will probably continue to increase. Especially again, even though we hate saying, at least I hate saying this at this point. Coming out of COVID, you know, we will probably continue to see our, our needs increase. We are also, and this was something that I thought was eye-opening. I always say I learn so much when I talk to Dr. Hillbrand. Not seeing the funds that we should for I D A all the time. We, that was eye-opening and also discouraging at the same time, right? Sometimes we don't see the funds that we were, we were allocated or we're, we're supposed to receive. And I think that is going to be something I hope sticks out and we can connect when we go into finance, because there's a discussion to be had there as well when we talk about relying on funds and where we're at. And so when we have these discussions out in the community, it, it can be very frightening when people make assumptions and evaluations with, without everything and the whole picture in front of them. And we talk about attendance, we talked about attendance being an issue, you know, which was brought up, which is alarming as well. And what is that going to look like in the future, right? I mean, what will happen if we cannot get an adequate amount of students here? Will we be forced into situations where we have to figure out how to accommodate students who will not come to school? Right? Because hey, listen, I'll put it out there. One of the things that, one of the things that I talked about when I wasn't on this board was, hey, if we had redundancies, you've heard me say redundancies. If we had redundancies and if we had more resources, we would have been able to service the community better during COVID. And one of the things that we don't want to face, for whatever reason, is that we didn't have the resources that we needed to service on a level that we wanted as a community as a whole. And it caused terrible friction, terrible pain, and terrible, fill in the blank, on everybody. And so what will that look like? You know, I know, Dr. Sparland, I don't want to steal your thunder. You're probably going to talk about something that's connected a little bit to that as well. If anyone thinks that things aren't going to continue to change, they will. And so connecting all these things is vitally important for all of us and for all of us to understand.
No, I was in the same vein as Jared. Yeah, I mean, we, we discussed, you know, the M T S S and early intervention and, you know, getting students some needs of lending at the right time. We also talked about under or over representation based on race and other economic factors and things along those lines. So we're, we did dug into it quite a bit.
All right, finance and facilities.
Unfortunately, we didn't have Quorum, but we had a phenomenal agenda plan. You know, we, we had planned to talk about the year-over-year comparison as well as the five-year projection for the new evidence-based funding. But we didn't have Quorum, so we didn't have it.
Do we, do we, because we keep asking for those five-year projections? And I'm just curious because, am I allowed to ask a couple of questions about this at least?
Sure.
Okay, because I, I do know that right now, I think I S B is taking, you can testify in front of I S B about the budget, is that correct?
It is correct. And Dr. Pesky is scheduled to give a virtual testimony, I believe, on October twenty-fourth. Is that correct? Very good.
And, and I do understand that I've asked for something a little bit that hasn't been done in the past, but I, I think it's, I want to reiterate and strengthen this that I think it would be very beneficial for our community to have those numbers, because I don't know that there aren't people in our community having those numbers who wouldn't maybe want to be a part of that I S B process. Or at least we could give them the opportunity to be a part of that process. And at the very least, we could empower those people. And I mean, I'll, I'll ask this question. I don't know if you, if I'm allowed to ask or you can answer or whatever, but do, do we have numbers on what kind of cuts would be needed if, if something? We talked about I D A, we're not getting those funds. What happens if E B F freezes? What, what happens if we don't have new funds for E B F? What happens if we have a board that says, forget it? We're not going to levy. What happens in those scenarios over five years? How much would we need to cut in those two scenarios?
Yep, Dr. Pesky has those projections and we could definitely provide them to the board at a public meeting if the board were to request it.
I request it.
And, and again, I can only stress that in the future, I would suggest having those things before. I know it's not in, in the past how it's been done, but having that before I S B has this so that we can empower our community. Thank you.
So I think the board, we're all in agreement that we would like to have those projections. Dr. Pesky, can you provide those to us?
No problem. Provide those to the board at a board meeting? Or if, I mean, just want to be clear.
I, I would like, I would like it for, for the public to see, yes.
Okay, six point three, superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Simpkins. I just have a few items to share this evening. Last week was homecoming at O H S. The week was filled with many activities for the students. They won their game Friday night and the week culminated with the dance, which was great to see the thousands of kids that attended that homecoming dance. We're the, this, this is the second week of our district food drive, which is very, very important to our community. Our district food drive is the single largest donation to the Kendall County Food Pantry. And due to the hundreds of thousands of items that we usually collect during this time, it stocks the shelves for three to four months. Our schools have some fun. We make this friendly competition with the schools. Who has the largest donation? They're announced at the Friday night hometown, cross-town game, which will be here at Oswego East High School next week, or this Friday night, I should say. And our schools also do a very nice job of teaching about food insecurity and the importance of helping out with this important event within our community. And I've been told today, every year, the last nine years, we've actually set a new grand total, which has really been phenomenal, because you see the number of the three hundred thousand plus items that were brought in as a whole district last year is just incredible. I think this has a lot to do with our community, you know, where people are at right now. But my update today was that we're about fifty percent of what we have, have in the past. So our totals right now are lower. But hopefully by the end of tomorrow, they will have increased a little bit more, because it really does make a huge difference for those who are suffering from foods with not having the food and things that they need right now. Last week, we met with Lori Grant from I S B about our triple I presentation. And the title of the presentation is Amplifying Student Voice with a, with a seat at the board table. And Mrs. Simpkins, Mr. Gaywood, myself, Dr. Waller, along with Anya and Caitlin, and then Monica. And then we also talked to Arianna Franklin, who is a freshman in college, who will be coming back to present with us as well. And that presentation is at the triple I conference at the Hyatt Regency on November nineteenth at ten thirty. And my final announcement is that our first community advisory committee meeting will be on October nineteenth from six to seven thirty, right here in this room, here at Oswego East. We're excited about the new committee and I'm looking forward to reporting, with reporting out to the board how our first committee meeting was on our October twenty-fourth meeting. So that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sparland. Six point four, student ambassador report.
Hi, everyone. So in our last report, we talked about the Google Form application we have for the student advisory committee. And we're excited to be finalizing this form as well as our flyer and Google size to get this information out to our students. As a reminder, the Google Form application is including a range of questions about identity perspectives that students can share with us. This hopefully means that this information will be sent out soon and we can review those incoming applications within the coming weeks. As Dr. Sparland kind of talked about, we also wanted to mention about the triple I conference in which Anya, Monica, Ariana, and I have been invited to discuss our journey with district leadership, attending board meetings, and our abilities to use our voices to acknowledge more students in our district. So we hope that with this and the added student perspectives to the S A C, that student voice, student voice increases across our district.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to seven point one, consent agenda. Are there any questions on the consent agenda?
I, I have something. As far as the FOIAs are concerned, I just want to point out what we've done in the past is if you go to our website, you can easily link and see those FOIAs every single year up until this year. What we have changed is, they're still there. You just have to go to individual board meetings, but they're not easily linked anymore. And we haven't done anything that were technically, you know, as far as I know, there's nothing wrong with what we've done. I mean, I've, I've done a FOIA through, I'll just say, a township, which in order to get the information from a FOIA that someone requests, they should make you fill out another FOIA. However, I will say this. I do believe that this is a reduction in transparency, however we spin this. And my fear is, again, I will say this, that I fear that there are forces outside of this district that are getting to us. And I don't believe this is the way to react to them. So I make that comment, make that observation. I've had several conversations with, conversations with community members who did notice. I understand that our standard in the past has been exemplary compared to others. I understand that we don't get that credit that we deserve, despite what some people will say. But I enjoy that we have a high standard. I don't enjoy that people will sometimes take advantage of that high standard. But I still believe that that's who we are. And however we want to spin it, we've reduced our transparency in that realm. That's all.
Well, I don't mind asking a question if there's a reason.
Yeah, FOIAs, to begin, they're, they can be very sensitive in nature. So the information that we put out there, even with the redactions that were allowed, sometimes can be sensitive in nature. A lot of times when we respond to a FOIA, we actually call the person who's requesting. So we develop a, we develop a report with that person and find out a lot of times what they're asking for, why they're asking for it. We get the context of what they're looking for. And many times, some types of that information without the requesters' context can be taken out of context and can be misinterpreted. So and not only that, but we also have, sometimes FOIAs, they come at us from a commercial perspective. So there's commercial FOIAs and there's residential FOIAs or public FOIAs. And we just like to monitor who's asking for the information. We like to have those conversations and find out what people are looking for. A lot of times someone will turn in a FOIA and they'll just ask for a lot of information. And a lot of times our initial responses are, that's a voluminous request. Can you narrow down what you're looking for? And sometimes they can't. And then we just go on with the conversation and say, well, what, what information? Or why are you looking for this information? Well, I heard in a board meeting, in a finance conversation, they were talking about this. Oh, let me clarify that for you and, you know, get you the right information. So there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work and hours and hours of phone calls and conversations providing why that information is sought after. And so I don't know any other districts that publish their FOIA responses. I've never seen that before in all my twenty-eight years. I've never seen that before in all my 28 years. And I just figured, well, it's just like the requesters ask us for FOIAs, it would be, you know, develop that same relationship with other requesters. What information are you looking for? Why are you looking for that? Can we help you locate that information?
Well, I, I can appreciate the last couple of sentences that you had there. But if we're going to have it out there regardless, if we're going to have it in the board docs.
No, it's not in board docs either. So it's, it was, there was a transition when there was the information that was being presented to the board, but that, that is no longer the case as well. So the information is the requester, who wants the information, what the request was, and when we responded to that and how many hours it took to respond. That information is available on the website. But the actual response is not. And it could be, you know, hundreds of pages. It can be emails. It can be, you know, if you just take a look at the last few FOIAs, all of that information.
So you just said typical practice would be what we're doing today. But as past practice, was there something wrong with that? Other than like from a legal perspective?
No.
And like, like I said, you know, I, I know a particular township where there was something I was interested in. And in order to view the FOIA, I had to submit a FOIA. So I'm aware of that practice. It just seems, again, interesting to me that years ago, I could have someone very, very authoritative contact me from the media and really want to talk to me about one certain thing. And again, I cannot stress to people enough, the silence on certain things right now is definite.
There's a.
It's very, hold on, it's very, very interesting. And I fear that some of this has a lot to do with what is going on in outside forces. And so I hope people are paying attention. And I hope I'm wrong.
The out of context part, how do I say it? You go to our website, you go to almost any website, look at something, think you know everything about it, and it's going to be taken out of context. For example, every single financial statement that's up there. Not just ours, but if people think that, oh, I see this, I see that, they understand. But obviously, it's a lot more complicated than that. So I don't know if I, how much I care about taking these things out of context. It's an all time.
Well, and I would say to clarify, it's not so much out of context. I think it's out of the requesters' purview. I think that, like I said, the relationship that we build, the questions that we ask, the conversations that we have will get us more quality information to answer those questions. And if we don't have those conversations, then there's, either it's a voluminous request and then we don't fulfill the FOIA, or we ask clarifying questions and we narrow down the scope of what and why people are looking at the information they are. So.
Okay, any other questions on the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve all items under consent, including 7.1, minutes of the Board of Education meeting on September 26, 2022, open, closed sessions, and 7.2, the acknowledgement of FOIA requests received by the district.
Second. Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Sir Wong?
Aye.
Ms. Simleth?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Klover?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item 8.1 is information regarding financial statements. Does the board have any questions as to what's been provided this evening?
I have one. Are we in a paper agreement with anybody?
We have a few. I know that we've been looking at like even school specialty because there's been some paper supply issues.
Because when I flip through, there's like 15,000 in paper last month and it's six different vendors.
I can look into that and find out. I know that we do have, we also use co-ops. So we'll oftentimes use best pricing. It depends on the amount of inventory and things like that.
Because like some of the schools are buying it by the pallet and some of the schools are buying it not by the pallet.
Okay.
So I don't know if there's a better way at a district level to purchase more paper.
Yeah, and I think a little bit of that is a storage issue as well. So some schools have, you know, some schools have storage space to store that much paper. And so they buy as much as they need and others buy, you know, a couple of cartons at a time as they need it. So it's one of those things, copiers, if you've got paper laying around for two, three years, the copier's jammed because of the degradation or the humidity of the paper and things like that. So it depends on where they're storing it, how they're storing it, if they have storage space, things like that. We used to keep it in our warehouse and deliver it to all the schools. That's what's keeping up all the humidity. If we didn't have a climate controlled warehouse, it would be.
Item 8.2 is in regards to a couple of new courses at the high school for the 23-24 school year. We have Mr. Dan Aronson, Executive Director of High School Instruction and K-12 Assessments, is here to present to the board. So welcome to the Board of Education, Ms. Grant.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate that. So tonight, I'll be proposing eight courses that I think you kind of see a common theme throughout most of them about how we're kind of moving in a direction here. So we'll approach the first one. This is the Career Seminar course. And this is a pretty interesting course because if you notice on there, this is for ninth and 10th grade students. This is a CTE department course, the next one is as well. But the ninth and 10th grades, we're kind of a gap as far as what we're missing for getting kind of some entry area into students as far as CTE and areas of interest. And this is something that as we move forward in education, specifically in Illinois and across the nation, we're really trying to get involved with having students have an understanding of what programs after high school there are to offer, even during the high school years as well as even careers to offer. So with this, if you see the course sequence there at the bottom, starting in ninth grade, this is a ninth and 10th grade course. The Program of Study Orientation Course also goes with that. So that can be ending from Fundamentals of Business, Culinary One, Woods, things like that. And then moving progressively onto their senior year. So with this course, really, as I mentioned before, it's an entry into CTE and trying to explore what opportunities career wise they have for students, which is, which is pretty fantastic. We've got a lot of good people reaching out to us about this and kind of like asking how we're developing and things as well too. So kind of the capstone of this would be, if you see there at the very bottom, 12th grade internship in ICE. This could be a great way for our students to ninth and 10th grade years, get this experience of what they might be interested in and then provide that work opportunities at our high school credit board as well. Our next course is also a CTE course. This is Introduction to Digital Photography. This course is a really pretty unique course. One of the things that's very unique about this course is the prereq for this course is actually a CTE course or a Fine Arts course. And our Fine Arts and CTE department chairs work hand in hand to develop this because really it benefits both departments. One thing that's pretty interesting about this, we currently offer something called Digital Snapshot, Snapshot, sorry, which is really more about the manipulation of the photo itself. So a student could take a picture with their cellphone, something like that, and then go onto a computer and really do some things, pretty interesting things with that photo. With this course in particular, we're really trying to develop students their skills behind the camera, using professional cameras. So offer them to build a professional portfolio with the camera. So something they have interest in. Again, it's about using the camera, how to adjust it, how to use all the different functions of the camera. So again, it's a similar course, but it has two very different pathways with that. Connecticut Wellness has two courses tonight. The first one is Sports Officiating. This is something that a lot of schools or a lot of districts in the area are looking into, as well as the next one, largely because of the need for sports officials. It's a significant need and we're trying to do what we can to kind of fill that need. So this is for 11th and 12th grade students. Nothing changes as far as fitness requirements throughout the week. But twice a week, they'll be going into a classroom, learning about specific sports. And really, the culmination of this would be to take an IHSA exam. It says there at the bottom, the cost of the assessment is $70 for the first sport. At the IHSA fee, there's nothing you can do for that. But we look at like an AP course, they don't have to take the exam. We would love for them to do that and become an official. But if they, if they don't want to do that and it's going to $70, they don't have to. Some of the things we're looking to do is softball, soccer, volleyball, basketball, possibly football. Again, all areas of need for our area and the state of Illinois. And again, nationally, this could be something to students that earn some money on the side by doing this, being in local areas or the Park District, even eventually hopefully being an IHSA official. Lifeguarding is the next course. Again, this is something that's in high demand in the area. It's difficult. It is a very difficult standard to meet when you're talking about the Red Cross standard to be a lifeguard. We would offer this course zero hour, which is kind of unique because obviously only Oswego East High School has a pool. And to make it able for both OH and OE to have this course, zero hour from 6:20 a.m. to 7:08 a.m. would be the time we would offer. There is a $55 fee associated with this. That's due to the cost of the materials through the American Red Cross and the certification of the exam. But again, this gives an opportunity for students to earn money potentially. It would be a hotel, a water park. We've even kind of kicked around the idea of having students potentially end up lifeguard certification and then work here at OE potentially during the afternoons as something to lifeguard and be a partner. AP, excuse me, AP Pre Calculus. The only thing that really changes here, and this would take place, and that's noted up there, of Honors Pre Calculus. This is the first year the College Board has offered this. This gives an opportunity, it's kind of a win-win for us. It's the same students for the most part that we think would be taking Honors Pre Calculus, but now it's not, but the AP Pre Calculus, potentially having students earn that college right for the course. Contemporary Human Geography is brand new to us. We are offering, this will replace Modern World History. We do a social studies curriculum review and this is one of the courses that has been developed coming out of that. This is a more, more global view instead of a European view necessarily, that really focuses on the impact human populations have on the planet. And units of study could be population and migration patterns, cultural patterns, economic development, and really how all of that shapes laws, economics, communication, technology, all throughout the world. And this will, again, replace our Modern World History class that's currently offered. And units are currently being developed with this right now. The last two we have are Fine Arts courses. So what's neat, what's interesting about these Fine Arts courses is, and I'll kind of go back and forth with this. There is Introduction to Piano and Music Production. So Introduction to Piano, they're both replacing courses. We have School of Rock I, which Introduction to Piano will replace. School of Rock I and School of Rock II haven't run in years. There just hasn't been any student interest. We have it out there, we try to pitch it. For whatever reason, it's just not gaining any traction. So to try to still offer things, right, kind of entry level courses for students, we feel, and our department chairs for Fine Arts and our band directors feel that Introduction to Piano would be a great start. It's very broad. There's no fundamental skills that are needed for it. It's going to encompass multiple music genres. Students are going to learn to play the piano. We have keyboards for them to do that. But again, it's something that, I apologize about the air there. Yeah, again, it's something that we think can give them an entry into music without having any music background, right? And then let's be developed from here is the Music Production, which is the next, the next step of this, which we place School of Rock II. And this really goes into how students today are really listening to music and really understanding music. And it really has to do with electronic music and creating beats. And units could be breaking down, every unit can be breaking down projects and individual or group collaboration and working with modern software to do so. This is the timeline we have for student scheduling, which is pretty straightforward. There might be a date that's going to be altered here or there. We're still working that stuff. So make sure we have that in the cloud. I'm sure some of you have questions. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Ms. Aronson, thank you for that presentation. You know, I'm very happy to see courses that provide internships as well as courses that are providing credentials or certifications that lead to employability and provide a service to our community. Those are a couple of the things. I mean, I'm excited about all, everything that you just presented, but those are the things that we've talked about over the years and see it start to come fruition is good. So I just want to make that comment.
Can I jump on that? So that's slide four. So as a mom with a kid who does IHSA officiating, you have to be 17.
Correct.
So I, I get it for 12th grade. I'm a little hesitant. I mean, I get it for 11th grade, but I guess it's, for me, it's kind of like drivers that you have to be 15 on the whatever date to get into it is kind of where I see that going, only because you're going to, you're going to take the class to take the test to officiate and you should be able to officiate.
I had the same question, like what are we going to do if you don't turn 17 until?
Right.
I had the same question.
Sure, they could always take the course and then have all those, all that material talk to them. And that way, once, once they do get to turn 17, they can, they can take the exam and then be more successful.
And I would add, Aronson too, as Aronson one, I'm just saying. And then slide three, are we buying those cameras or do we have those cameras?
We have already.
You have the updated?
Yep, I actually spoke with our instructor today. She showed me the ones that have been newly ordered. She talked to me about mirrored lenses versus digital lenses.
They're expensive.
How about that?
Yeah. I have a great mind. And then real quick, just slide one. Is it one? No, slide two. Can we maybe contemplate changing?
Program of study.
Can we, that doesn't.
Program of study.
I didn't agree with that change.
POS, that is not maybe an acronym I would choose for. I'm trying to be as politically correct as possible, but I would change that.
Sure.
To something a little different.
CTE key?
Something.
I can probably just type out program of study.
I had a car once, that was it.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's really one question. I think all these classes are great. My question is actually with the registration process.
Yep.
During the registration process, this may just be me talking as the end user, but I did not, as we were registering my son, we didn't see the descriptions of the classes, only the names of the classes. And so these classes would have been, for example, very interesting to him as I think it'll be very interesting to many, many students. But if they don't understand, as, just as an example, you know, their music production, there's a prereq sets of piano. If you don't understand why you have to learn the piano, because keystrokes, the beats are created from the keystrokes, et cetera. But I'm just saying that digital camera, you know, and even the first one that you said, what was the first one?
Career Seminar.
Yeah, so my point is that if they can't see the descriptions when they're registering, it could be one of the reasons why we don't see take rate on certain classes. So I think that it would, if these classes are phenomenal, I just think that students will have to, it would help if they could see the descriptions when they register.
Sure. That may not be you, but I'll say that.
I'll try and make mine real quick. I'll try. AP classes, are there other AP classes out there that we're exploring that just haven't hit yet?
So it's a good question. I don't know all the AP classes that are kind of coming down the pipeline since we were there that we're going to offer right now. I'd absolutely get back to you about the AP classes that we may or may not offer.
And I'm just wondering if there were a couple we were close, maybe? And I'm not, believe me, I'm not asking, hey, list all the APs. That would be unreasonable. But I'm just curious if there were a couple we were close to maybe saying, hey, we're real close on this one, but not quite there?
Yeah, nothing that has been recently brought to my attention. Again, once, once this was. Again, once, once this was kind of released, both the park charters and the high schools for math, they were like, absolutely, let's go forward with this. And really, it's a, it's a no lose, right, it's a reason for college, but the kids who are taking honors pre-calculus are probably going to take this anyway.
Can I jump on a, a question for that?
Sure.
How many teachers do we have with a masters in content that instead of an AP could also be taught as dual credit?
So, I'd have to get back to you about the number of teachers we have for this. I know there's eighteen credit hours of the content, you know, technically, I believe you need the full masters. We went through this past year.
Need a full masters? Not anymore?
Eighteen credits.
Or dual credit?
Not, not all, not all dual, I've just been actually doing a lot of research on this, and so some content areas, you only need eighteen graduate hours. But is that one of them? Is, is math one of them where you only need eighteen?
Yeah. We, we looked at this last year.
We're going to whole resource, we can talk to.
But, but to your point, we would love to have more dual credit, direct dual credit offerings with, with this, right?
Because we've talked about this with Wabansy, and what it became, the last time we talked about it, was let's just call it all AP and run them all as AP classes. Which is kind of what I would like to get away from, only because the difference between an AP class and a dual credit class, if it's a Wabansy dual credit class, and you pull a C, you get those credits. You're guaranteed those credits, you get your own transcript. If you take AP, you have to pass that exam score high enough to get those credits. So, for kids who are just trying out college, for your top ten percenters, all day long AP. But for those kids who are thinking, maybe I want to go to college, maybe I don't, those kids belong in dual credit. And we have far more of the kids who are trying college and have the opportunity to try college in high school for free, I might add, through some of these Wabansy programs, and we have not pushed those for years.
I, I agree with you, although there's now, I, I, because I've been, I've been talking to, I've talked to people at ISB about this, ISB, I talked to the person in charge over at COD about this, and I've been talking, and I've actually been talking to a lot of stakeholders, because I've been doing a lot of research on this topic, because I had a very upset parent about dual credit. And I said, hey, I'll, I'll go to work for you, and I've been doing this, a lot of work on this. And what I've discovered is some interesting things from a few universities, that they've been pulling some stunts. For instance, let's take like an English one oh three class, right? You'd think if you, if you take dual credit and you have English one oh three, you've got that one covered, right? And you can take a dual credit English class. But now, there's some tricks they're pulling, where you think you have English one oh three, but if you're, let's say, and this is an example, like, I'm not saying this particular example, but let's say you go into nursing, they have a particular English one oh three that you have to take. And so, if you have that dual credit class that you received from, let's say, Wabansy, they're not going to accept that English one oh three, you have to take the nursing English one oh three particular class. So, and I'm not saying that's every university, but now there's this trick now that's being pulled by some universities in order to circumvent even the dual credit classes. So, and I'm not saying this everywhere, and I'm, and I, I'm with you, by the way, and so I want to make that clear. I'm, I'm a big proponent of dual credit classes, absolutely, because I feel like if you have your associate's degree, they can't take that from you, if you get that far. But, it's interesting, doing the research, some of the tricks that are being pulled now, and it's all about money. Um, did you have one more, because I have two more.
I just want to reiterate with that.
Yeah. Lifeguard, not saying I'm not in favor, and I'm not saying it's not a good thing, great, it's awesome. However, I'm going to ask this question. What are the effects on, are going to be on our co-curriculars who do utilize the pool outside of school hours, do we know?
I think that's a little bit of an unknown at this time.
Okay.
I think first and foremost, possibly before we get there, is if these courses are approved, we'd have to see how many kids would be interested in doing this, right? So if we have the right auditions to take this course, that's something we need to work out with our, and with our departments and things like that, about utilization space.
And last one, I swear, is Music Production. Is there, and I'm sure that they probably thought about this, although it's under Fine Arts, so I don't know, maybe not, but I noticed that it says Introduction to Piano or Instructor Approval. If somebody was in band, I'm pretty sure this district does not allow you to take percussion, unless you've had, well, I know this district does not allow you to take percussion without years of piano instruction, so I'm curious if, if, I don't know, maybe we don't want to be, maybe we don't want to advertise this, so maybe it's better off leaving it as Instructor Approval, but if you wanted to take this class, and you were in percussion, you probably have a few years of piano instruction. It's just kind of a note on there.
And I think that's why the Instructor Approval.
Probably, because you go, oh, percussionist, come on in, but it's just, I don't know. Wearing the band shirt, I don't know, maybe that's...
You know, I had a question on Yakin and Kelton, that was...
That's hard to read, I apologize, there's a lot of...
Yeah, it's not the bottom portion. Prerequisite, an A in quotes, average, and the other two is, is, is an A usually a prerequisite to getting a, is that AP persons, or?
No, I, I believe for, this was, and I had to look at my notes, but I, I believe this is the same for honors pre-calculus. They just moved over to AP pre-calculus.
I think that kind of keeps some kids out of that. And I think it would depend on which teacher you had and what school you were at, also.
So the suggestion would be then, any student that would want to take your course, take the course.
Well, if we're doing it for calculus, why not pre-calculus? I mean, if there is a reason, then that's fine, I just, if it's...
You're saying an A average, you're going to limit your kids. There's some pretty talented kids with B's and C's who just don't do their homework, who could very easily pass AP or calc. I have a drawdown.
Zed?
Like something official, can we like do that?
Yeah, this isn't necessarily, yeah, I just might, I wonder.
I know the teachers are good at that.
No, I actually agree with that, too, because, I, I mean, I, I don't think that an A is necessarily, well, it's certainly indicative of mastery of the content, algebra two, but B typically is also, I, I don't know anything beyond that C or, or lower, but certainly an A seems a little bit of a high bar unnecessarily, so.
Mr. Arson, do you have to reply to that, or is that something you need to take, you would like to take back to the department chairs of committee? When you bring this back for action?
Sure, I, I mean, I think I'd like to bring it back. I'm sure there's historical reason, right? Saying that, though, I think you're probably going to get around the same number of kids who want to take this course. But also, if we can eliminate any barriers, then so be it, right, even if it's one or two students. But, I would like to speak with my math department chair, who put this in for a particular reason.
Yeah, there's a reason.
Yeah. Clearly, I am not a math department chair, Arson, but, yeah, I'd like to know if, if something had happened to cause that. Or if it's just a legacy thing that we need to find.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Arson, item eight point three.
Where we go, can we, can we at some point in the next month or two, get an update on where we're at with dual credit?
Panarticulated credit.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one, we haven't talked about that in a long time.
I know, right?
Yeah, well... Like, maybe the next couple minutes? You know, we're not so many.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.
All right, item eight point three is the School Maintenance Project Grant, Dr. Pesky?
Thought I'd come up here, since I'm going to be up here for a couple, you know, but... Yeah, the School Maintenance Project Grant, we are submitting that, and one of the requirements for that is to actually present it to the Board of Education. It's a matching grant, so we would qualify for fifty thousand dollars towards a school construction project. In this case, we are applying it towards the replacement of the Oswego High and Bogey Boiler-Chiller Project that's set to cost about, you know, about one point one million dollars. And this, the state would give us fifty thousand dollars to contribute towards that project. So, considering if there are any questions about that.
Did you say fifty thousand dollars, or?
Fifty thousand, yeah, it's just a...
It's a six, yeah, you said a matching number, you're...
Okay. Yeah, well, matching up to fifty thousand dollars, so we're going to do way more than that?
Yeah.
We're going to get our fifty thousand.
So, there. What's that?
Yeah, maybe just change my question, because you said matching, I'll say it out loud, just in case. But, is there another project? I was trying to figure out if we can get a bigger bang for the buck, as opposed to, we already have the money budgeted for the Chiller-Boiler project.
Through debt service extension, but this would free up, basically, it's the category improvement project, so what we, if we do find other projects, this would be fifty thousand that we could then, we do need to apply this fifty thousand towards that, but then instead of spending one point one million, we'll spend one point oh five million, and that's, we'll spend that fifty thousand towards...
Have we had these proj, have we had applied for these kind of grants before?
We have, we have, the last one, it was for, I believe, parking lights, or the light replacements, and gold H or something like that.
It was LED replacement. We, we were, and I don't know if this is a good time, but I mean, you want to share anything about what you just applied for over the weekend? In regards to three point three million dollars worth of grants?
Yeah, over the weekend, we, with the state also made available an early childhood grant, or preschool grant, they've made funding. It's not a, it's not a grant that everyone gets, it's a competitive grant. So we turned in our application, I thought initially we'd be looking at about a million dollars worth of improvements, but after doing some more homework on what's needed at the early childhood center, roofs, parking lots, some concrete work, some other work, we ended up, we ended up submitting for three point three million dollars.
Actually, any school that hosts this early childhood grant?
Correct, correct. So, I hope to hear back, I just hit the submit button on Monday, so I spent, spent Monday wrapping that one up, and submitted the grant, and now I'll be watching, I'm going to see when they approve that and if they're going for it. So I'll come back to the board on Monday.
Very good, any other questions regarding the second? All right, thank you, Dr. Pesky, like you said, you're up for the next one, so discussion of student fees. Do you, I think you have a presentation for us?
Yeah, I do, I do, I kind of put it out there as just some talking points on different, different questions that different board members have had, community members about school fees, so I figured we'd start that conversation. So to begin, I just think it's important to point out that we do have a board policy, so four colon one four oh. And it talks about waiver of student fees, eligibility criteria, verification, and outstanding fees. So here, I, I just wanted to point out, just to kind of educate the board again, the different levels that we have. I think there's a lot of confusion when we talk about fees, and also the meal program, because we talk about free and reduced lunch, and then we also talk about registration, academic and athletic fees. So just to start that conversation, there is for, for lunch, or to qualify for free lunch, there's a direct certified, direct certifi eligibility. And that's where families apply for lunch and fee waivers through an application hardship process that they go through the Department of Health Services. So, what that means is they're receiving benefits for state food, or cash, or medical assistance. And if they qualify for that, then we get that information from the state, and we can automatically qualify those families for free lunch and for fee waivers. So it covers both of those. Then we have the free lunch eligibility, which is based on our local district policy, just families apply for us, with the school district, and based on what we're calling income eligible, income eligible applications. What that means is that they verify their income, they qualify for free lunch, and there's a second application process to save that level of income that was verified for the free lunch, also qualifies them for, to have their fees waived.
So there's one application?
Which is at the state level, the state provides us who qualifies for direct cert.
Yeah, I'm talking about number two.
Number two, free lunch.
So number two is if there's one application that can waive both.
There's, no, what that's saying, there's one that, that waives, or allows them to be free lunch eligible, but when they're free lunch eligible, we give them another application and say, if you fill this out, you can see by waiving your fees as well, so.
So in the past, we hadn't had two separate applications, if I remember correctly?
No, this is not a change.
I don't think this is, I don't think this is.
No, no, way past. In the, yeah, because initially, I think when I come on, there was one, this had been a topic in the Finance Committee, probably one of the very first meetings, which is good, a long time ago. But there had been some concern over families being unable to, or able to basically skate through, and if, if they were getting the free lunch, they were getting the free fees, which had led to a creation of a second application to try to cut down on that, if I remember correctly, right? But I don't believe that it hasn't turned out in all of the time since then, that that was actually necessary to have a second process. It, it was a decision made, if I remember correctly, you were on the board at that point, I think. I, I don't know if it was a procedural thing or what, but I do remember having this conversation with you.
I will say, just in my own experience in other districts in my career when I came here, and I saw this, that there was free lunch, and then, oh, if you fill out this application, it was very natural, a lot of districts do that, because it's, the free lunch is separate from fees. So we'll hopefully do that.
But if you qualify for free lunch, would it make you not?
So I'll let him finish his thing, but then I'd like to, to comment first, because I did ask for this item for the agenda.
So, I did, for to clarify for everyone, for Dominic, too, is yes, that step number two, free lunch eligibility, there's a free lunch application, and if they qualify for free lunch, we have them fill out a second application to say, let's, let's use that, those income standards for the fee waivers. And then, reduced eligibility...
Oh, wait, can I ask you a question? What is the difference between the free lunch eligible and the direct certified? Is there two different criterias for that?
Yeah, well, the one is, the one direct certified is actually from the state of Illinois. They, they qualify through the Department of Health Services.
I know, but is there some difference in terms of eligibility, like, why?
A different level of income?
Yeah, yeah, we, our, our level of income verification is different than the state, so... And it also gets down to like, how many kids, it varies, how many, how many family members in every household, or you have a household of three, or seven, or eight. So there's different standards and different measures to look at.
Just to be sure I'm clear, the direct certified has a little bit stricter standards than the free lunch, so we can capture more families by adding additional supplementary options besides the direct.
I like that.
Yeah, okay.
And our, our, our standards are, our standards are different than the income eligibility for the state, so we allow more people to qualify for free lunch, and then that's when the application for a fee waiver comes in, because they're actually making a little bit more, and they don't qualify for direct cert. So if they do come in, as an example or scenario, a family comes in, and they've got a family of four, and they're making thirty-two thousand dollars, and they fill out a free lunch sheet, we'll point out, hey, you actually qualify through direct cert. If you go through the Department of Health and do this process, we can very easily waive your lunches, and you'll get other benefits from the state, and we can also waive your fees.
But also, the time to keep in mind, what he said there, just for later, that they will direct them to fill out a different form, if they go and search out, you're very... Right.
If you get more services.
You see, oh, totally. However, what are we...
And then, and then the third one up there is a reduced, and I, I meant to put, it's reduced lunch eligible. So I, to keep consistent, we've got the free lunch eligible, and I should have had reduced lunch eligible. But that's based on our local district policies, families apply, and the difference between number three and number two is, number three, for reduced eligibility, it's self-reported income. So we waive the lunch, or we, we don't give them free lunch, but we do a reduced lunch, which at this, currently lunches cost forty cents per lunch. And we, we allow that reduced for families who self-report their income. But if they want to also apply that towards a fee waiver, then we ask them to fill out a, that second application, and the fee waiver does require us to have a level of proof of income. Not as stringent as direct cert, not like the state. Free lunches, we do income eligibility for both. Free lunches, we do income eligibility for both the income and we waive lunch and fees. And then we've got reduced, which is a self-reported income. And what, and then we offer, if they wanna fill out the application for fees, and then they would need to self-report their income. Or verify, I'm sorry, they have to verify. So, does that make sense?
So, for what you're saying is, and just again for clarification, for, for our self-reporting reduced lunch family, or reduced cost lunch families, this is assuming they have the ability to find some way to report it. If we, if we have a family that regardless of whether it ought to happen or not, comes in and gets paid in cash, for example, or works a variety of different kinds of jobs, they won't be able to report that they have that as income or not have it as income, is that correct?
Well, that's where, you know, depending on how they, how they report their income, whether it's through a 1099 or whether it's through their W-2s or through their pay stubs, we collect.
Right.
Types of verification for employment.
As long as they have that option available, which obviously is gonna leave out some of our families, like really.
Some of them, and we learn a lot about our families through this process and helping them, my staff working through the eligibility process and asking the questions and, and trying to support people through, you know, through reduced eligibility, through free lunch eligibility, and then ultimately we have the direct certification. One of the, one of the things that we end with.
All of which are separate from student fee waivers and we don't have an option for fee reduction, is that correct?
Uh, right, and that's what we're, that's what we're proposing. So, we're, actually ISBE is proposing to account for a reduced fee as well. So, reduced fee. So, what Lori's saying is typically it's reduced eligible, they, they are, they qualify for a reduced lunch. And in the process, school fees are not waived, but if they prove their income and they, they go a certain amount, then they'll get, it's either free or paid. There is no reduced fee. So, what the ISBE and my staff is looking at is, is, is there some in-between where it could be a reduced fee? If kindergarten registration or first grade registration is $195, maybe it's only, you know, $95 for people to qualify for. That's just one take. So, to let the board know too, is we, we communicated this July 21st. It was an important date for us because we wanted to get a communication out. Our, the system that we use for taking payments and fees and all of that is through a system called PushCoin. And PushCoin, as soon as we put the fees into our student information system and they get uploaded to PushCoin, it automatically sends out an invoice. And I was told that in the past, there's been some confusion about what am I getting, why am I getting this, what is this for? And so, I figured, you know what, let's just put together a invoice letter. So, in that letter, we just talked about, hey, you're gonna get an invoice for the next school year. There's fee payments and waiver information, payment plans, if people wanna look into that. And then we talked about free and reduced meal applications as well. So, we just communicated those resources to all of our families, that communication. We followed that up again on August 12th, where we actually, in this whole process of looking at fees, we were looking at student academic fees and then the difference between an academic fee and a participation fee. It's, it's outlined in our policy, but, you know, that's where the discussion in the department and with other departments was taking place, is what is our experience with student academic fees and student participation fees? And then, a big thing for our district is financial eligibility. And our policy, it says if a family is not paid up on their fees, that the students are ineligible to play in certain sports. And we've been dealing with that. And so, we, we kinda outlined finance, financial eligibility. And we have some examples in that letter about what does it mean for high school, junior high and elementary school. So, those, those letters went out to the families.
Can we, as far as sports goes?
Yeah.
Just so some of the other teacher people on the board know, so that really kinda impacts spring sports, right? Because we say it, we don't make them pay till a certain date, which, so by the way, you can get all the way through winter and, and fall seasons before you have to pay. So, then the spring sports are the ones that if you haven't paid, you get. That's not true anymore?
Yeah, we were told that, yeah, for fall, that you can go ahead.
Where did that say? Can, can we hurry through this? Because there's a lot of side discussions that I think we'd all like to just have as one, because I think this is a very simple fix.
All right. Um, just real quick, Allie, since you brought that up, it's actually in the, it's a 30-day, when, when people are invoiced for that, so they have 30 days to pay that. So, in the fall, they start practicing, they start dressing. But as soon as the rosters are loaded, then we let the families know that 30 days after that roster loaded, they're invoiced in PushCoin, they have 30 days to pay that. And then it's the same in the fall, in the winter, in the spring.
Or certain. And it's not just sports?
No?
No.
I have another question about sports fees, come on, I'll ask it in a minute.
Okay. Say, maybe I'll answer.
Go on.
Um, I did do for the board, I did a fee audit. This is data reminiscent of April, I have not had my staff go back in yet. But that's the next step, to go back in and kinda see where we are. So, back in April and May, I had, this list shows the schools down the left-hand column. It shows the number of students who owe fees and then how much is owed by those students. So, I'll pick most.
Students or families, because you're putting up their families?
Um, yeah, on this side, I put the number of outstanding fees. So, it could be a family with two children and.
So, it's not per student, it's per family?
Uh, per student or family, we can count them, one family, but they could have three kids.
That's what I'm saying, you're not talking about, this isn't 26 individual students. It could be 26 families, but it could be like 40 kids.
Correct, that's why the family, yeah. So, I've got over here number of, the number of students and then I've got the number of families. So, I've got both up there. Uh, the first number is the like Wolf's Crossing, there are 30 students who owe $7,021. Of those 30 students, we have five families, or is it three?
Five.
Three to five families who owe more than $500. So, what that tells you is 27 students, or however many families added, they owe less than $500. And then, the number of families on a payment plan at Wolf's Crossing, there's two. Two families, that could be four kids, six kids on a payment plan. And you can look at every school down, down the columns that way. So, if you look at, we have 4,054 students who owe 1.2 million dollars in fees. And of that, we have about 771 of those families owe more than $500. So, if you do the math there, you know, you've got about 3,400 or 3,300 families who owe less than $500. Of those 4,054 students, 551 students are represented in a family payment.
But that 551 families might not be out of that 771. They, they could be a family that owes $100.
Correct, yes.
So, these, these aren't comparison of 551 out of 771?
No, and I could break that down further and let you know.
No, I don't think we need to have that level of detail. I think, unless anyone else has any questions.
So, one of our purposes, well, I'll show you here. Well, I'll go back here on this slide, one of the reasons for our, our change, just real quick, was what we'd like to see is they have more families on a payment plan. We wanna support people who are, who are having some hard times paying their fees.
Thank you.
So, that's what, when I look at this data again this year, what I'd like to see is that we have more families on a payment plan who we're supporting to help pay those fees. But when we talk about fees, one of the, was some data that I wanted to put out there and show the board, we were looking at, is just examples of some of the academic, student academic fees. So, here you see four school districts with Oswego at the top. And you can kinda see it, high school, junior high, elementary, half-day kindergarten and full-day kindergarten programs, what those fees are. So, for instance, junior high student at Oswego, it's $165 registration fee. West Aurora's 175, Plainfield is 70, and Naperville is $80. So, it just kinda, kinda gives you a comparison of some of our comparables that we can use.
Wait. And listen, I'm not trying to be critical by any stretch of the imagination, but in the future, if we're gonna do 203, I'd like to see 204.
Which actually borders our district?
Yeah, because it borders, I'd rather see two, to be honest with you, I'd rather see 204 than 203.
Okay.
But I'm not trying to be critical, so, but, but just, just a personal preference for me.
And percent funded, right? Would probably be relevant.
Yes.
That's a different.
What's the same would probably be as like.
Yes.
So, listen, I appreciate all this. I'm gonna give some background because I did ask for this thing for a couple of reasons. One, at changing our fee structure and looking at student fees and this 1.2 million dollars of outstanding student fees, all of this is stuff that we had looked at when we were doing some of our massive budget cutting. And the main concern that had arisen, we had gone through the community and said, listen, in the first year, we had gone for a referendum twice. But the year before that, we had said, what does the community want? We had gone on a listing tour, so to speak, and, and said, listen, you know, we have two choices. We're gonna go grow, we can either talk about raising our fees or we can talk about doing a referendum. We listened to the community at that point and chose to increase fees. There was like a 70-some item list of items we went through line by line, including each and every fee. The, the promise that I believed had been made, the, the consideration that I believed had been made, and correct me if I'm wrong, you were there too, but was that there wouldn't be a student who was turned away or socially excluded because of an inability to pay. For any reduced lunch combined together had been talked about as the reason. What we're actually seeing happen in practice for, I don't know why, it's just what it is, um, is that our reduced lunch students who can't or don't understand or for a variety of reasons don't have a way to also submit tax returns and things like that, or perhaps just don't want to because of a variety of reasons, um, don't have any way, so this is the one issue, don't have any way to get a fee waiver. Um, so there's that one issue is, we should, if we're going to be offering fee waivers to our free lunch students, we should probably, I'd like to consider offering them to our reduced lunch students as well, or at least a reduction in fees. That's the first issue. The second issue is that we had really significantly requested that our service-related clubs and activities. For example, I remember elementary school, student patrol, key club, maybe like student ambassadors or something like that, wouldn't be charged a fee because what they're doing is actually saving money. They're providing a service for the district. And those are being charged for some of those organizations, I believe now. That's the second issue that I'm, I'm seeing happening that I'd like to make sure that we address. The third issue is that I would like to, to see that it's not just athletics. And, and that's where I first became aware of this, this year. Um, it's also things like dances, it's things like fine arts programs, clubs, it's in addition to IHSA sports. Um, and then the fourth thing is, there's a minimum of $50 per student that has to be paid. And there's no way for families, if they can't make that $50 minimum, say they have two children and it's $100 a month. They can't afford $100 a month, they can barely afford $100 a month for food because they're just on that border of reduced lunch versus free lunch. Um, and now they're not sitting on a payment plan because they can't afford $100 bucks. They'd be happy to pay 50, they could do that, but they can't do 100. We don't have a way or anything in our policy to change that minimum. So, that's the third, fourth, fifth, seventh issue that I got. I, there, there's a lot of things that I'm concerned about here, primarily that, that the understanding and the kind of general feeling amongst the community with these fees is that no one would be excluded. Um, come six years later, maybe, that, that is happening, students are being excluded because of money. And, and that's not supposed to happen in a district that values equity. So, we, I'd like to see something change on this. I'd like to see us look at, do we still need our athletic fees? It only covers 40% of the cost of our athletics, let's be real, it's not paying for our athletic programs. It, does that make sense? Well, you don't think it does, but it does, and it's like maybe 40%.
Can I ask you a question about athletics, real quick?
Yeah.
Because you're on it. So, Tracy Tyler was here many years ago.
Yep.
Um, our athletic fees that were collected were supposed to be our budget for the following year.
Yes.
Whatever happened with that?
That, I, like, I'm not the right person to ask that question of because I have no idea.
100% of athletic fees go stores, athletic budget now. They, he and Dr. Pesci and the athletic directors have worked that out. I think Dr. Pesci's got some recommendations that also coincide with your requests and I think of.
And I just want one more slide, yeah.
But he had questions and comments, let's turn this one.
Right, but I didn't click it right yet. So, I, we, what, the one thing to point out, what Lori's talking about is, I, I think the positive note is when we were doing the budget reductions, what this slide shows is that I don't think we originally raised fees on registration and academics. But when you look at where examples of student participation, athletics and club fees and things like that, Oswego is definitely an outlier. We've got, high school sports are $300 per sport, West Aurora is 50 for first sport, $25 if they have a second sport, and then nothing, just 75 if they're a three-sport athlete. Plainfield 202 charges 130 per sport, Naperville 203 is $100 a sport, and then you see the junior highs there. So, I think that conversations we've been having in cabinet is, when were we going to look at the impact of those fees and how that's going to, to, how that's going to look in our future projections? And I think one of the things that Dr. Sparling has charged me to do for the board is to actually look at the financial projections and look to say, you know, what if those sport fees, athletic fees were lower? How would that impact the, how would that impact our financial?
So, look at West Aurora, that's not really a fair apples to apples.
No, it's not.
We have a huge, we get, we get so much more money from the state.
Well, and, and that's the thing, you can't look at these in a vacuum. So, while I appreciate the simplicity of your slide, it, it doesn't tell anything that's relevantly meaningful for making a financial decision for this district. But what we have done is created a strategic plan based on providing equity and not excluding students based on financial need. So, the matter of what that dollar amount could be is less relevant to me than the fact that we have students that are being excluded due to their inability to pay for, and it is for academic fees in addition to participation fees. Those are just the, the sport participation fees. We also have club fees, activity fees. Um, we have the service organizations that are now being charged fees also, which I'm not sure why that's happening because they're not supposed to be. Um, and we can go back to board minutes and, and all of that kind of fun stuff. But it really, like, this is, this is a path that shouldn't, it, it was never intended for us to go down. And if something in our policy is making that seem allowable, I'd like to correct that because it's not okay.
Yeah, I'll echo one part, and I know for a fact that student investors, you get charged, because I'm getting charged for that, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that, because we, I remember that conversation, it shouldn't be.
I was on the board.
So, you said. No, you weren't, this was before you.
We've had it when I was on the board.
You've had it then also, but. Yeah. So, I don't think I have a change in policy.
Yeah. Your recommendations that you would like to share?
Yeah, so my, my recommendation is that we, we look at this and where we were with our financial pictures and why we made some of these changes. And I think that we, we take a look at what that financial impact would be if we were to show a lower participation fee. Um, and now Lori, I've written down like, and not just participation with athletics and clubs, but the service organizations and actually have a list of all the opportunities our kids have extracurricularly and what are they being charged for those, so that we can be informed of. But I do, and we are working on.
We've asked you for this already.
As well, as well as the, the students for the reduced lunch prices?
Correct.
What then would look like for reduced fees as well?
And that is.
Since that's not an option?
That is going to happen because that's coming out from ISBE.
For a child?
Yeah. Yeah.
This is not, yeah, this, these are all, it, it, I appreciate your work on the athletic fee and obviously the athletic fee has gotten a lot of press over the years and this is one that has been an outlier. But Dr. Pesci, please stop limiting it to just one simple little thing. This is a bigger issue that's not just in fees, which is in your department. It's an issue of making our financial practices match our strategic plan and our statements of equity for our whole district. So, please don't, please don't allow yourself to oversimplify this down to simple things like I'm hearing you do right now.
Well, and what, what I'm also, what I'm also saying is our, our team, because of these conversations. Well, and what, what I'm also, what I'm also saying is our, our team, because of these conversations, our team was looking at offering a third tier. So we have the direct certification, we have the free and the reduced, and we started looking at that, offering a reduced, uh, a reduced, um, waiver.
Whatever you come up with before the board, I'm sure will be fine. I'm sure you've got a lot of different things you and your team are talking about, but what, what I'm asking for is to see a result of the looking into, not the, that we will.
Can I, can I ask one thing that we talked about way, way back in the day when we originally talked about this? So we talked about people being able to, in essence, work off their fees. Like, students working with the janitorial staff after school and helping to clean the.
I don't know how, I, I don't know.
Like, I'm just.
Yeah.
Or parents, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't wanna go to athletics, but that's where I'm at all the time. But even parents, you can't, you have a hard time getting parents to work concessions. Do you know what I mean? Like, something where people are willing to give their time if they can't give their money. Do you know what I mean? So there has to be some.
I get that.
Yeah.
The other main one is this all-day kindergarten thing, and we did kinda skip that a little bit in the conversation about the academics. We still charge five hundred and fifty dollars a year for all-day kindergarten. That was done at a time where, again, budget was incredibly tight. But the reality is, we are way out of line with where other districts continue to be and where we have been prior to that specific decision. Um, that I don't know, you know, Dr. Sparland, I feel more comfortable if, if you've got a complete list, if we make sure doctor, like, that their departments have this entire scope and scale either through the recording and the different things we've been talking about. But I don't wanna see us waiting on this time after time to have to come back for more information that wasn't included initially.
I agree. I agree with everything she's saying. Just one other caveat is, I know that push pay, there's something in push pay that limits. Uh, so for example, I have one kid, so my minimum payment is fifty dollars.
Right.
But obviously, it's, it's per kid, so can, can we change the algorithm or the setting on the backend of push pay to allow it? So if it's, if it's possible, then yeah, yes.
So, one, and then, there was something else with, with that price per kid that you had just mentioned, that I'm gonna need to come back to on that, 'cause it totally escaped my brain right now.
Even if you can take away the per kid and just make it a minimum.
Fifty dollars per family, right. So, oh, this was the other thing. So also, the last thing that I noticed about this that I found incredibly, and I'll be honest, I found this incredibly irritating, was that we don't allow activity and sports fees to be included in these payment plans. Those have to be paid in full upfront. The only thing that can be put on a payment plan is the academic fees.
Yeah, always can be paid in fairness.
Yeah.
Tell me, tell me, tell me why I was told that only the academics.
No, it's only the academic fees, because the, uh.
The loan department.
The idea behind the payment plans, and, and that's something that I'm really aware of in Oswego 308. I'm not aware of that with other districts, um, offering a payment plan. But one way that the district, uh, one, one, uh, uh, kind of resource they put in place for families is the payment plan. And the idea behind the plane, payment plan, based on the information that I have, was to allow families to pay their fees and be paid off at the end of the school year. So one of the reasons why we're at that fifty dollars per child is so that, at the beginning of the school year, um, we have a payment plan where maybe you owe like seven hundred dollars. Well, at the end of nine months, you only pay four hundred and fifty dollars of that. So you already begin with a three-hundred-dollar, uh, balance, and then next year hits again. So it, um, it, the payment plan was set up for the purposes of allowing families some, kind of a break, instead of paying seven hundred and fifty dollars right now before school starts, letting them pay that school year.
As long as they don't wanna participate in anything but school. Can I, can I play devil's advocate just for a minute? I get where you're going with this, 'cause I did play devil's advocate on this a long time ago. Go for it. I'm, I'm gonna ask the question, since we're do, what do we do? One point two?
Two point two.
So I'm imagining that somebody in their budget somewhere has earmarked that money for something. So I understand where we're coming from as a board with our equity statements, but how do we make up the difference?
Yeah.
We're already not getting that right now. Like, that's not money that would magically be found if we keep the practices we have. We're, that's money that's currently owed, that's not.
Right, but we're talking about reducing athletic fees and reducing kindergarten fees and reducing, and which, I, I, well, that's where you're heading, but it's.
I think the opposite could also be true. For example, I'm gonna give you a real life example. Uh, ninth grade year, me, I couldn't afford to pay my student fees. And so, then, back then, the minimum was more than that. I could have paid fifty dollars these two months, and then by the third month, I could have paid the balance off. But because I couldn't even pay the minimum, I had to just wait three or four months until I could save enough to pay that amount.
Yes.
So I'm saying that, you know, it, it could work, where if people were allowed to pay fifty dollars, the seven hundred and seventies of them may do that over, you know, several months. So I, but I do understand.
Which I get what you're saying, but I'm also, my fear in all this is, I get it, you were.
But I think you still set the parameters that it still has to be set, paid by the end of the school year. I don't know what the, what the rules or parameters around that would be, but I think you still have to set the rule that even though you have the fifty dollars maybe your minimum, your total balance still has to be paid by this due date. Um, and then that gives them the leeway to do it. Now, I may be, you know, that may be pie in the sky for me, but.
I was gonna say, and if it's not your decision, then part of that question to answer, what does that look like for the following year? So if I, if I still have a balance, and I, because I didn't pay it off, but I wasn't making my fifty-dollar payments, then what does that look like for the following year as far as?
Agreed.
Right? So again, it's.
And I understand we're not a collection agency, 'cause, you know, we're getting into that, but, I mean, I think that there just has to be some, some consideration for the students, 'cause they're the ones that are being impacted by the financial situation.
And then have to explain to everyone their own age in a different reason than my parents can't afford it.
Yes.
Right.
Um, that's a pretty psychological, heavily psychological toll. I would just say, let's just look back at, say, twenty twelve, twenty thirteen, and look at the dollar value of what we were not collecting then, 'cause right now, it looks like 1.2 million is not currently collected. Um, was it, how much higher or lower was it? Because my, my remembrance is, it wasn't all that different than this.
Well, in transparency with that table, and this is where my team, I've challenged them to, this is all active students in the system. So for instance, one of those students at OHS could have accumulated funds from third grade all the way up. So it's not ju, it's not these paid over one year. That is all students currently in our system and what they owe in a balance. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah, actually, actually, it makes a lot of sense, and I gotta be careful how I phrase this, but I still get, I still get notices for a student who attended OE who graduated that I'm actually not financially responsible. And it's not, it's not my, it's not my oldest son either, so full disclaimer, but somebody else, and I'm not financially responsible for them, but they don't think I am for some weird reason. Um, but to your point, um, um, Al, these scenarios that you come up with or suggestions, i- i- if they involve altering the fees, I don't have a problem with that. But if they do involve that, I would like to see what effects they have on projections.
Absolutely.
Um.
Absolutely.
I have, I have a line item per, you know, um, for each thing that you propose.
That's, that's what he's going to provide.
Yeah.
I just wanna, I just wanna make sure, make that clear, that's all.
But, but based on that, if this is across five years, ten years, or since third grade, it's not an annual, I'm not, I'm not see how it would be annualized to impact the projection at all.
Well, yeah, that's half to break out, is what, if we were start from, from square one, this year was the first year, then what are we collecting, what are we collecting? What does that look like on an annual basis?
Yeah, that would help, that would be helpful. Yes, that would be helpful.
We have to tackle Lori's concern with that, for sure. Um, you know, some of the things that have been discussed in the past were familial household maximums.
That is another point.
Right, but you can't keep kids out of school either.
Well, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars if they have triplets going into kindergarten. I mean, that's just for that kindergarten fee, and that's it.
That's a real thing for a family with multiples, going to kindergarten.
Like, kids that are going from.
Eleven hundred dollars, they gotta pay off that year with kindergarten.
Family with, uh, four kids, and they have, um, they're, you know, they're all in sports, and.
You know, that, you know.
We had to stress that back then also. At that point, we didn't have the ability to do that. I am, I am sure that you can present maybe an A, B, and C option, Dr. Sparland, on what these different things could look like that we can take a gander at.
Is that student fees and activity fees, because I, I, I think that's.
Yes.
Any.
Yeah.
Any.
It's a, it's a comprehensive look at our fee structure. Because we, we raised them for a reason.
Yep.
And during a time period when we were going through cuts and things like that, our financial picture is, is better now than when it was when we made those decisions. And these are conversations that we had back then, that we would revisit these, uh, you know, the fees that we charged at a later point in time when that was appropriate. And I think, based off of what some of the things we've seen, it's now is a good time to start that conversation.
You know, I, I need to always be looking at, um, the biggest, big for luck, I keep saying it. And I just, uh, you know, I, I, that's why I wanna see the line item. And I know that if we were to, to do something along these lines, we might not be able to do something, some other things on the academic side. Um, so I, I really wanna make sure that we're doing the right thing. But, but.
Totally get it.
But this is, um.
Yeah.
Lori's concerns on equity is probably the most pressing. Um, lowering your fees is definitely something I'll look at, but.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely think that, I want, I mean, actually knowing that that's actually happening now, that, that, you know, people have been charged for the service organizations has kinda hopped up there too. They're providing a service, like, I, I'm not, it, it was service organizations and honor studies. For example, people shouldn't be kept out of the National Honor Society because they can't afford the fee to join that club. Um, that's not supposed to happen.
Well, I know some teachers actually take their stipend and they pay all the fees for all the students.
I know.
They shouldn't have to do that.
But they shouldn't have to do that either. Like, for real, if, if what we're saying is that we stand for these principles, then we need to stand for these principles financially too.
Absolutely.
E- especially if the outcome isn't going to make much difference either way financially.
Yeah, 'cause the 1.2 million, I'm looking at it, if it's squared out, it's, it's a hundred thousand dollars per grade.
So just out of my curiosity, what happens when a kid graduates?
Well, apparently, they keep sending in notices.
You, you will apparently receive, you, you will apparently still receive notices for whoever they think is potentially viable.
As long as Jared, I mean, families have a student system.
It's not even necessarily the person who is viable for you, it's who they think you are.
I was getting comments, things for a kid, I don't know, please.
Do you have a timeframe for this deliverable?
You know, and this actually comes at a good time, because I think that this makes sense. We're, we just passed our budget for the school year. We are, I, I was just telling Dr. Sparland this week, we're really gonna start digging heavily into our levy, which gets into what our budget is going to be, not next school year, but the school year after that when we start collecting. So, and with our financial projections and the variance report, this all, this all kinda comes into play. This is a good time to be looking at this financial data.
You're not saying that we would need to wait till the school year after next school year to make any of these changes? Let's just make sure we're real clear on that.
No.
The, the equity part needs to get probably implemented as soon as possible. The feedback probably would be next year.
That, that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think there's a couple things that we can do now, and then there's, uh, things that would be for next year, obviously, the conversation now, for next year.
Good, thank you, everyone. I, I appreciate the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I get to stay up here for one more.
One more, eight point five, Dr. Pesci, it's, uh, in regards to an intergovernmental agreement for sharing services between the village, counties, township, library, fire, and park district.
Yeah, when I first came to the district, I was just, I was, uh, you know, happy to get a contact from the village, and they invited me to a meeting. It was a shared services meeting, and just found out how we all kind of helped each other out. And then I found out that there was actually an intergovernmental agreement, a contract, that brought together the village, the library, uh, the, uh, fire protection district, the Oswego Township, um, the, uh, school district, and the park district. And we are all signed members of the intergovernmental agreement, which was drafted in two thousand nineteen, and it expires this year. So I actually reached out, um, to the village, and they're working on an updated IGA. What you have there, uh, in the board docs, is a, this year's IGA. And we're, uh, we're, they're going to do a rewrite of that, have it looked at, make sure it meets everyone's interest. When they give me a copy, I will give it to, uh, uh, an attorney who, uh, represents us, and not a shared attorney, um, to look it over, make sure it's in our best interest. But really, looking through the contract, it's really, you know, um, how are we paying, how are we sharing staff? How, how do we share equipment? How do we share, um, uh, facilities? And, uh, what if someone gets injured in the course of that work? It kinda, there's an indemnification clause, and it, it was really pretty basic. So I'll take a look at it, um, and, uh, and just, uh, I'll present that. I'll, I'll have, I'm hoping to have that for the next board meeting. If not, then when they do finalize that IGA and present it to us to present to our boards, I'll bring that back to the board and let you know how that has changed from the current IGA we're engaged in to what they are proposing. So, just wanted to keep it on the boards right now.
Can I take one question on this?
Yeah.
So this, this line stuck out to me, the one that says, no government shall be obligated to provide assistance or participate in a shared or cooperative agreement. And I'm curious, um, one of the things that, um, I love about our community, but at times frustrates me at the same time, depending on how the conversation goes, is that, you know, we span multiple counties, multiple municipalities, multiple townships, uh, multiple library districts, multiple fire department districts, multiple park districts. And there's a lot of government entities located within the boundaries of this school district, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm curious, like, I'm, I'm all for this, right? Um, uh, anytime that we can cooperate and save taxpayers money, that's a positive, that's a good thing, right? But I am curious, um, and it's not to, um, it's, it's not to do anything except, the, the question I'm about to ask is not to do anything except to try and help the taxpayer, right? And that is that, you know, when it makes sense to pool resources with the Village of Oswego, great, do it. But I'm curious why or what prevents us from saying shopping? From saying, hey, you know what, um, hey, thank you, Village of Oswego, but you know what, um, let, let's, 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 let's go to Plainfield. You know, like, like, first, Plainfield says, hey, I'm gonna send the SRO over to you for free once a week, right? That's awesome. Like, again, thank you, Plainfield. I don't know if I said this, but thank you, Plainfield. Um, you know, a- a- and, so, I'm curious why we don't have more of these outside of just the Village of Oswego, the Township of Oswego, the library? And, and listen, I'm not saying that's not an important one, it is a very important one. It's hugely important because of where everything is located. I get it. But, um, if there are situations where we can get a benefit from Montgomery or a benefit from Plainfield, or a benefit from Aurora, the Ninth Ward, Nauset Township, uh, Bristol Township, I mean, I could keep going, right?
Yeah.
Um, why not? Right? A- a- and if, if it's a better benefit for us, why not? Right? And, and, I, I'm just curious about that, and, um, I understand, again, that Oswego's on the name, and I understand that Oswego is the largest of those entities, and, and that, um, and the historical importance of that and all of that, and I don't want to undermine that. But I also think that if it benefits us to, I don't know, get paper from Montgomery, then get paper from Montgomery, if that makes sense, you know, and that's just a, a example.
I'm glad you're bringing that up, because I think it, it gives us an opportunity to say that while we're looking, this is a, this is basically an intergovernmental agreement, because we had some overlapping services and, and some resources that made sense. But I think it also needs to be pointed out that a lot of that, I mean, the IGA is about relationships. How, how do we have these relationships, and how do they benefit us? And how do we formalize that relationship so that we're kind of identified? If we do share equipment or things are damaged, and, but to say that that's not happening at, like, Homestead and Wheatlands with Aurora, or it's not happening with Boulder Hill and Montgomery, I think a lot of those relationships are happening at the building level. And, and I, you know, I guess I could ask in our next shared services, like, where this came from, but I think it's because there is that overlap. You know, Oswego is the, you know, it, it's the largest, uh, piece of. You know, Oswego is the, you know, it, it's the largest, uh, piece of the district and so we did a lot of work with them, the counties, the township, um, the different services and whatnot. So, I think it, it, it got to the point where they wanted to formalize it officially through an IGA. But to say that those activities and those types of, uh, shared resources or things aren't happening at the other schools, I think is, is not accurate. I think it is happening.
So, I was there. I think my name's on one of these, on this report you're showing. Yeah.
Okay.
So, thanks, thanks so much.
2019, yeah.
Right. So, that was the reason for it. Um, it was because we had been working very siloed and we wanted to formalize that we could work together and it has benefited us greatly. None of this excludes anything from happening with any of our other municipalities. I believe that we have explored that and we continue to explore that. But this, this is merely the one that's listed for Oswego. We could choose to approach, and maybe we want to, to choose to formalize an IGA with our other municipalities and our county office, because Boulder Hill and Long Beach being in the county jurisdiction. Maybe we, maybe it's time to formalize those with some of our other things, um, just so that we know, we keep it all in front of everyone's mind when we're buying things. Um, and that's, I think, where a lot of it is. Ally, I know we talked about paper.
There's a thing.
There's a thing for that, I think. But I think that, I, I don't like the idea of pitting our municipalities against each other and trying to say who's going to give us the better deal, but at the same time, like, there are things that we all have to offer each other that we could probably do a better job reaching out to them.
You know, when I came into the district, like I said, they reached out to me and pulled me in. But where my focus was, was first at the, the clerks. I wanted to know about my levies and my tax collections. And so, I contacted Will County and Kane County, Kendall County, and got to know the clerks. And through working with them, then we got into working with the villages. And then we got into the townships. And, um, like Lori said, I think that this just kind of solidified that, you know, it really is about building relationships and at least knowing, you know, who is in Montgomery that can help us out, who is, uh, in Aurora, you know, working with the city of Aurora and the resources that they have. We've got a couple of schools in there. The interesting thing is from a, from that perspective, that yes, the school district overlaps, but they don't overlap necessarily. Uh, they do, you know, some of the townships do, but the villages, how they overlap and what they're able to do, um, can be a little bit more restrictive than the school district who can access, you know, the Aurora Public Library or the Plainfield Library or the Oswego Library and things of that nature. So, something for us to keep on the radar, continue to build those relationships.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
All right, 9.1, action item approval of bills for payment. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the payment of bills in the amount, um, $12,224,918, as presented.
Second.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye. Motion passes 6-0. 9.2, action item policies for second read and approval. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following board policy. Section 4, operations, 4:65. Section 5, general personnel, 5:80. Section 6, instructions, 6:33. And section 7, students, 7:27.
Second.
Ms. Doyle?
No.
Ms. Swanson?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-1. 9.3, action item approval of trust plus services. Can I have a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy manual customization agreement with IASB, Illinois Association of School Boards.
One second.
Ms. Simmleton?
Aye.
Ms. Swanson?
No.
Mr. Plogar?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
No.
Mr. Serone?
Aye.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-2. 9.4, action item approval of board member travel request. Can I have a motion, please?
Oh, sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve the board member travel request to attend the Triple I Annual Conference in Chicago.
Second.
Mr. Gatewood?
Aye.
Mr. Serone?